We're going to call a meeting to order at 6:32. And the first item on the agenda is to approve the minutes of the regular meeting held on May 11, 2021.
Make a motion that we approve the meeting for the minutes for the regular meeting held on May 11, 2021.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Next order of business is the audience of citizens. If there's any business to come before the board. I see we have some guests here today. Does anyone have anything they want to speak about? Go ahead. Let's just identify yourselves through the record.
Hi, my name is Carla Waitovich. I live... Hi, hi, everyone. I am just here tonight to talk about a safety issue that's going on on our road. I live on Cedar Swamp Road. It's off of Route 80 at the stoplight. And our road, if you're not familiar with it, it's over a mile long and it's rather narrow. So there's really no shoulder space and it's heavily used by citizens in our neighborhood, walking, you know, walking dogs, walking for exercise with our kids. I go bike riding almost every day with my little one. And we just have such a huge problem with speeding on our street. And sometimes it is our residents who live in our neighborhood, unfortunately, but also oftentimes it's delivery trucks, it's landscaping trucks. And as you may know, our road terminates at the state forest. So we do have a lot of people that are coming through down Cedar Swamp to go to the state forest. And it also is like slightly descends. The whole road is on like a slow slope all the way down towards the pond and everything. And there's nothing that breaks up the speed. Just two weeks ago, on Saturday, the 15th, there was actually an accident that a car was going so fast and I don't know exactly what happened with the accident, but the car ended up flipping onto its side. And that's on a street where the speed limit's only supposed to be 25 miles an hour. Of course, there's going to be new houses going in on Hoopole Hill as well. And that's a particular spot where the road also gets curvy in some areas. And that's one area where it gets curvy. So like it's like kind of a blind curve. So I mean, most days when I'm coming to and from work, I run into somebody almost every day who's out, you know, walking, even even in the colder weather, especially when COVID came, more of us were outside than than ever before. So we'd really like stop signs on our street, stop signs at the intersection where Hoopole Hill is to break up the speed right there and also where that curve is. In particular, when those houses are built and more cars are going to be coming out that way, I think it would be much safer. And then again, when you get to the intersection where Shaler Pond is, again, to completely break the speed of anybody who's coming by and continuing on to go past Shaler Pond into the forest or even if it's just FedEx and delivery trucks like that, because there's just nothing to break up the speed. And I know we've, you know, we've talked to our resident trooper who's been really supportive and done everything he's could at this point, but nothing that he's able to do is like a long-term solution. So that's what we'd like to see is stop signs and whatever we need to do to get it done, we're willing to do it. I don't know what you need from us from residents, if you need, you know, a petition request, if there needs to be enough people in the neighborhood to request it, or we know what would need to happen. But we, that's just really what we want, so we can feel safe and enjoy our neighborhood. That accident that happened Saturday was so scary because it just, I think, was sheer luck that there was nobody out in that area at that time. It's not uncommon even to have horseback riders. You know, there's plenty of properties with with horses on our street. And my kids, I know, always get excited when there's a horse walking by our house. So that's that. I would just love to know what we could do to make that happen.
Well, that was the first step, bringing it up to us. Let us, I'm going to talk, have to talk with the trooper kilo and also with Paul Frost and see what they what they think about the situation out there. I think we'll all go take a look at the intersections and see. Stop signs are are interesting. When it comes to to controlling speed, state does not actually agree that they that they work because they really just become more of an enforcement. If there's nobody there to enforce them, folks just kind of skate through them. But I think that the best best thing was to do what you did. You brought it to our attention. You brought the idea to us and we'll we'll take a look at it and we'll have more conversation about it. Try to try to get something up there to slow folks down a little bit.
Yeah, I visit friends right at the beginning of Cedar Swamp.
Yep.
Gracie, as a matter of fact, there's a, I've heard of some others, big white truck that would go flying down the road and whatnot. Depending on the mood, he tends to want to go and find them and tell them they're slowed down. So I know firsthand that they're beginning to see the swamp, they know this is speed. So.
Well, that's a good one.
There's so many kids that live in the neighborhood and I, you know, and I still see some of the younger kids that are allowed to maybe walk to a friend's house. And I get nervous each time because there's just, like I said, speeding is just gets to be really crazy. And again, with with the narrowness of how that road gets more narrow, it's like there's just nowhere for you to really go.
Yep. No, it's a good thought. And we'll take it into consideration and try to try to work out what the best solution might be for everybody. Thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? I don't know. I'm not sure. Okay, are you good?
I think Jen might be having problems.
Yeah, I can't. I can't unmute you. You have to unmute yourself.
No. Why don't you try?
Okay, so if you go, if you put your cursor down where chat was, all the way to the left, there should be a mute button. It looks like a microphone. And if it has like a red X on it or a red line, you just tap on it and it will unmute you. You don't have that?
Somewhere on the screen. If you tap the screen, it should show up.
Yeah, if you tap the screen, you should have a microphone somewhere.
I'll tell you what, if you want to chat your question.
Yeah, you could chat your question and I could read it.
Back to, we'll move on to the next one, then come back to, if that's okay with you. Or you might want to try exiting and coming back. Joyce will let you back in and see what's up. Okay, is there anyone else that has for the audience of citizens? Hearing nothing, we'll remember we're going to come back to Jennifer. But let's move on to the next item, which is discussion of the Neighborhood Assistance Act, tax credit for Deep River Congregational Church. And we're going to add for this conversation to Deep River Housing Authority or Curren Commons also came in. I'm not asked to put on that.
Do you have to make a motion?
I don't think so, because it doesn't say, it just says we're going to discuss the Neighborhood Assistance Act. Yeah, it doesn't hurt. It doesn't hurt to get one. So if somebody wants to make a motion to add the Deep River Housing Authority to the conversation.
Make a motion that we add the Deep River Housing Authority to item four of the agenda.
Okay, great. All those in favor? I think that the, you know, pretty much annually now for the last four or five years, both the Congregational Church and the Deep River Housing Authority has taken advantage of the Neighborhood Assistance Act. And really, the town is really just a conduit to that for them. You guys remember, we listened to Allison and Joanne explain their programs. And then we'll bring it to a town meeting and then we'll vote. Allison is here from the Congregational Church. Allison, if you wanted to explain your program this year, that'd be great.
Okay, let's see. I am unmuted. Yes. So even during the pandemic and COVID year, the Congregational Church of Deep River was active. And we didn't have all of the meetings that we normally did. But yet, we continued every Thursday with the Shoreline Soup Kitchen and Food Pantry. And just to give you an idea of how much demand there was, before the pandemic, every Thursday, we would serve 50 meals. At the peak, it jumped to 180. Our kitchen was being used and the meals were being served curbside on Thursdays. And then we also served as a meeting space for the Transitions Academy because they needed a place to be. So they were using Lower Fellowship Hall for their students during that time, too. And now we're starting to open up again slowly now that Transitions Academy is going to be done with that in June. Other groups can start meeting again carefully. But we've still been that kind of central institution for the town. And when you have, when you have a place to take care of, the bigger, it's always something. And the bigger the place and space, the more things there are that are in need. And right now, we've identified needs that upgrades from installing energy-efficient appliances, low-flow fixtures like the toilets and the faucets, because we have eight bathrooms for the community. And sustainable energy conservation, windows, wall coverings, the lighting, all of those add up to some pretty big dollars. And we've cost it out to approximately $26,500 is the total. If we don't get that in a given year, then you go to phase one of the project and then phase two the next year and prioritize. And so those are the needs. Completing the installation of the low-flow, energy-efficient fixtures and appliances in the bathrooms and the kitchens. And then install low, sustainable, energy-efficient ceiling flooring, wall window coverings. We have all of that. Insulation was needed in certain places. And the energy-efficient lighting throughout the building. So that's what we're requesting. And we thank you for your support. This is our sixth year of doing this. And it's been, it's been a blessing really to have these dollars to be able to to keep our building up to steep speeds so we can serve the community. Because in regular times, our building is used six days a week, year-round, by community groups. And you know, the groups Alcoholics Anonymous, Guiding Eyes for the Blind Puppy Training, they're going to be coming back. And of course, the Transitions Academy, National Theater for the Deaf, the Horseshoe League uses the grounds, Girl Scouts, Boy Scouts, Red Cross blood drives. So we're here for you.
I didn't know that M U was down there. I love that theater. That's a wonderful, wonderful group. Well, that's amazing. You guys do some fantastic work. And obviously, we're happy to help any way we can to get the building up to shape.
Thank you. We appreciate it.
Joanne Morgan was not able to attend tonight, but she represented Deep River Housing Authority. And she asked me to speak a little bit about their program. They've got a bunch of, a number of their units are still outfitted with pretty old refrigerators. They replace those refrigerators every, you know, as much as they can. Usually one or two a year is all they can really afford. This year with this with this program, they're able to replace 21 of them. If they get the monies that they need, as Allison described, they don't always get all of the funding that they want. But in order to do this in one fell swoop, to get some more efficient refrigerators for all of the units as opposed to one or two at a time, I think is a good way to go about it. And obviously, they've been doing this for a pretty long time, too. And so it works out for them. Each project that they do really is helpful. As Allison describes, it's money that's not budgeted for, but certainly counted on to try to keep the programs going, the projects.
If they can find it.
If they can find it, that's right. That's the hard part. And that's, I think, the harder part. So unless you have some questions for Allison, or I could try to answer some of your questions for Joanne, we can just entertain a motion to to support both applications and move them to a town meeting to be held on June 8th, right after the board's last meeting.
I'll make a motion to put on Neighborhood Assistance Act for the Congregational Church and Curren Commons for a town meeting on June 8th.
My second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Allison.
Thank you.
See you in June. Let's see, Jennifer, are we back?
Hello, can you hear me? It's kind of funny. I'm on Zoom meetings through work all day, but I'm on my, so the configuration is much different. Sharing with me. So as Carla mentioned, we have some safety concerns. I also live on Cedar Swamp Road. And what I wanted to mention in conjunction with the message that she was portraying is when you come through the neighborhood, I recommend you go down Hoopole and turn around and come out to try to take a left or a right. It's just to experience it being a blind corner. We have friends who are building houses down there. And anytime we try to exit that, it is kind of white-knuckled when you're making your turn, especially with the water sign on the right. Sotheby's has their, you know, for sale sign.
What intersection was that again? I'm sorry.
It's where Hoopole comes into Cedar Farm. So and then also, I know you mentioned about being at the friends at the top of the street. Again, where I live, I live at 167. So it's just past the bad corner, down a slight slope. So in the morning, when I wait for the school bus with my daughter and my son is there because we have to bring him to Church Street in the morning, I sometimes kind of put myself in the middle of the street just because the trash truck is coming. They get coasting, like, you know, it is a decline all the way down. They get coasting and they're just flying past us. Neighbors do as well. I try to understand who they are and just kind of bring the awareness that, you know, I'm pretty sure going down our street, taking a couple of extra minutes is really not going to delay them getting work on time. They see our car at the end of the driveway. They see the kids. Obviously, we don't want anyone's kids to run out into the road. But kids, I mean, they just, they see a ball or a whatever and they're not, you know, aware of their surroundings. Or even at Carla's driveway intersection. So she's just past Shaler Farms. And her and I will be in a conversation while our kids are playing in her yard. And we're watching FedEx fly by both ways, not even just going down and then leaving. So I just encourage you, when you guys do come down, to kind of stop and absorb what we're feeling and just how some of those traffic patterns are happening. I do, I understand with the stop signs, the point that you're making, but something else has to be done. Because I do walk to Carla's house with my kids on bikes. I do walk up to Hoopole to go down. It's flat and somewhat remote to take the kids down there. And we also go up the street. And it's definitely not, you are taking your life into your own hands just with the surroundings. So we would love to see some positive impacts within our our street.
Okay, yeah, thanks. We'd certainly consider this and speak with the law enforcement and see what the best best report might be. And it might very well be your stop signs. We'll see where we go.
So, sorry, what will the next, like, when would this, how would you get back in contact with us? Do we need to another meeting? Like, how do we get the information?
If you want to, you can give us your contact info right now. If you want to just email Joyce, she can do that. It might be a little bit better. And then, you know, we'll get back in touch with you. We've got another meeting on June 8th. Maybe we'll have something then. I would suggest it might be the meeting following that.
Okay, thank you. Jennifer, what's your last name?
Phillips.
Okay. So if you call the office tomorrow, tomorrow, I could give you all my information and you can give me your information as well.
Sounds good.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Okay, let's see. Going 50 hop tonight. So it's code number five. Tax refunds for the tax collector. This month, we have two requested refunds for a total of $2,427.34. So if we can get a motion to move those.
Joanne broke the number down. I'll make a motion for the tax refund from the tax collector in $2,427.34.
My second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thanks. Let's see, a couple of announcements to make, really. First one is to make sure anybody who's watching this pay attention. On June 9th is the last day of school and June 10th is the beginning of the closure of West Elm Street or Route 80 up at the bridge, right near Deep River Farms. It's going to be a difficult summer, to say the least, but they really had no choice but to do it during that time period in order to try to relieve some of the traffic during the school season. To close that road during the school year would have been a real disaster. So they're doing everything they can. I know Duane is working hard with the contract and the state to try and try and expedite the work. It's a difficult project and difficult ways to do that. But we're doing our best to try to move that along quicker than the projected completion date, which I think is August 25th. But hopefully, it comes up a little sooner than that because I think school starts on the 27th or something.
I see the official detour signs are up and they're covered in black. Yeah, so we're kind of undoing and, you know, not to beat a dead horse, but we hope that people follow the state or the publish detours and then not finding eighteen-wheelers and things like that going through some of our local roads.
Yep.
But, but yeah, they're making progress.
Yeah, they are. And, you know, I guess the older you get, time goes faster. It's going to be a long summer, not that close. That's for sure.
Yep.
The other project we, you guys, I know you guys have heard and paid attention during the budget process, but the American Rescue Plan. We're getting notices every couple of days about different things. I sent you guys out the most current one from CCM that it looks as if Deep River might be able to receive about $551,000 or in the vicinity of that. But that's that's still pretty fluid, as is the definition of what we can use that money.
Well, that's the, that's the key thing is, it's one thing to get the money, it's another thing to know what we can spend.
So we're working hard with CCM, with COGS, with COST, and our neighboring towns to try to really get a good definition of that. It's not money that needs to be spent right away. That's an important thing that we spoke about, too. It's money that we can spend up until 2024. So, you know, and a lot of the fear amongst communities all around the state, probably all around the country, is that the definition of what we can use it for is so vague that we start on a project thinking that we can use it for that. And then come to find out that they changed changed the scope, which is what what happened with some of the COVID relief months. So it's just something we're going to, you know, we're not going to jump into and start on some project. We're going to take it as carefully as we can to make sure we're doing everything properly. I don't have anything else.
Memorial Day Parade.
Oh, there you go. Memorial Day Parade is on Monday, shortened version. Jim and his pals help drive some of our older veterans down from Devon Field down to the Green. Parade starts at nine o'clock and finishes.
And this is, this is short because the Legion, because the organization's won.
Oh, yeah.
Because of COVID and whatever.
Right.
There's been, you know, I've heard, how come it's so short this year? And it's, and it's what they want.
It's their parade.
What the, what the, what's their parade? It's their parade. So we support whatever they want to do.
Yep. So that's coming up. There are ceremonies up at Winthrop Cemetery at 10 o'clock? I think, okay, it's 11 o'clock.
There's no parade in Winthrop. It's just a ceremony. Flight pull.
And the muster's on.
Muster's on.
Yep.
We're in the planning process for that. So get your muster stuff ready. Get your barbecues ready. Let's see what's going on. The school project, we are going to start paving in July. The school, we're going to be doing some of the roof. We're hopeful that some of the state bonding money came through and we can do all of the roof, get that completed and then start talking about putting some solar panels up there. But really, until we get finished.
I don't mean to chuckle, but as long as I was on the school board, it seems like it's always been a never-ending project.
Well, as long as I've been around. You know, we're trying our best, but this money, hopefully, comes through and we'll finish the whole thing.
So Sundays, 1 o'clock at the Winthrop Cemetery.
Oh, 1 o'clock.
1:45 Soviet Club. 2:45 Fountain Hill Cemetery.
Okay.
I've learned all this multiple times.
Yeah, so 1 o'clock at the Winthrop Cemetery, 1:45 at the Soviet Club. And what'd you say?
2:45.
2:45 at Fountain Hill Cemetery. First ceremonies only, no parades. And I think that about wraps it up. Like I say, we're going to start paving, hopefully in July, doing a little bit of crack filling as well. You should start, you should see this. You guys are out cleaning out the catch basins right now around town. We've got about 350 of them we're going to do this year. And that should be a week or so, week or 10 days long to get that finished up, part of the MS4 requirements. And I think that's it. I'm sure I'll remember something else later on, but we'll tell before finance. So we'll have a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn at 6:58.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Deep River Board of Finance, May 2021 meeting. The first thing, first thing on our agenda is the approval of several, the minutes of several meetings we have had. Lauren, do you want to call out the date and everyone will then say, yeah, or how do you want to do it?
We're doing both.
Do it in both. And there was one correction. It's May 3rd, not May 7th. Special workshop, you know, April 27th. Regular meeting of April 27th. Special meeting of May 18th. No meeting minutes of May 7th.
Most of the public's hearing.
Yes.
A little reading.
And you have to see all those minutes.
All those, can I have a second?
Second.
All of them. Does anyone wish to discuss the meeting minutes? No discussion? All those in favor of accepting the minutes can say aye.
Aye.
I love the both. Thank you. Audience of citizens, seeing, hearing, none, we shall move on. Tommy, this is you. Pressure is important.
Okay, great. Everyone should see the positive report. Did you get my job? Supposedly I've been sent to you today.
Okay, great. Um, everyone just sees the, uh, positive report. How, did you get my job? Supposedly I've been sent to you today.
Yep, got it. Thank you.
Thanks. Uh, just one thing, if you look at the general fund, the citizens' balance, the two twenty eight, seven ninety nine fifty. Uh, I had actually called for balances yesterday early. Uh, Kathy didn't make a, a small deposit into that account, hundred and two thousand, two hundred dollars. So it's, uh, it's, that balance is up around just under two hundred and ninety four thousand. Uh, there were a couple of checks that cleared too. So, so that's kind of where we are with that. Um, if you look, look at our general, our general fund, uh, total balances. Um, we hardly changed from, from last, from last month. Uh, we went down a hundred and sixty four thousand, seven hundred and two dollars. I, I did not make any wire transfers during the month. We pretty much, um, relied on the, uh, ECS monies that came in. Education grant monies that came in, eight hundred and thirty one thousand, four hundred and thirty six dollars, which kind of carried us through this, this, this month. Um, so if you look at our, actually, if you look at the balance from, uh, last year at this time for the general fund, uh, total balances, we're up four hundred and fifty six thousand, three hundred and fifty one dollars. Um, if you look at the total balances on the bottom of the page, uh, we're at five nine six twenty one, one sixty six oh six. Uh, if you compare it to last month, we are down a hundred and fifty seven thousand, four hundred and seventy dollars. If you look at last year at this time, we are actually up five hundred and eighty nine thousand, uh, two hundred and thirty nine, two hundred and thirty nine dollars. Um, we're looking ahead. Uh, we do have the Kirtland River Street sewer project expansion payment that will be due on June twenty third. Uh, it's twenty three thousand, ninety nine dollars. Uh, most of that, uh, well, actually the principal reduction will be ten thousand, three sixty nine fifty three. And the interest is twelve thousand, seven twenty nine, four, uh, forty seven. That, uh, that bond issue actually, uh, it's, uh, it's for forty years. Uh, the first payment was, was due June twenty third, uh, two thousand seventeen. So this will be actually our fifth payment. Uh, it was, um, originally for six hundred and five thousand, uh, two hundred and quarter percent interest. So the balance on that now is five seventy five, eight ninety five, thirty five. So it'll put that five sixty five, seven fifty four when we make, uh, when we make that payment. If anyone, uh, would like to get a copy of that amortization schedule for the payments for that over the forty years, um, I'd be glad to, uh, get that to you if that's anything you're interested in. Uh, but that's, but again, that won't be due until, uh, June twenty third, just before our fiscal year. Um, and so that's kind of it. It's pretty much where we are. So I, if you look at, uh, our municipal street money market account, that is just say it's stable. It's, uh, with the exception of a little interest that we've accrued since, uh, since last month. So we still have three million, six thirty one, four seventy in that account. So, um, I would say we're appreciating.
So can they remind me, and you've had told us several times, why do these four accounts at the top, you, they are all for general fund? What's the difference?
Well, one is naturally for the, uh, because of, uh, citizens, well, uh, citizens moved out of town. So that we set up a, a general fund account with Liberty, a small, a small general fund account with Liberty Bank to take care of, like, transfers. So, you know, we don't have to go physically, um, to the, to the branch. Um, that money mark, business money market account with Liberty, but that was a special account, um, at the time. Um, we put like five hundred thousand. They allowed us to put, actually, uh, we had a small account with them and they allowed us to, to add that five hundred thousand dollars. So that, uh, that stays, uh, we keep that money there because, uh, it earns more interest. Uh, and then we've got the, uh, money market account with, with Liberty Bank account. But, uh, interest vary not much, you know, point two oh, twenty basis points. But, uh, that's kind of where, where rates are today.
Is that your main dispersal account or is that you keep it there and the answers to move it to the?
Yeah, that's the, that's the account when we get, uh, the tax revenue monies that, that goes into that, that account. It's, uh, we make, that's where pretty much where the, uh, wire transfers are, are made from that account into our citizens' bank, our main, uh, bank, general fund account. Uh, so the monies come, when we get revenues, you know, the tax revenues goes into that account. When, uh, then during the rest of the year, we're taking monies out of that account, transferring it into the, uh, general fund, citizens' general fund account for our accounts payables that we, that we have.
Why are you keeping citizens? No interest at account?
Well, to tell you the truth, it's, uh, it's, it's a, a pain in the neck to have to change. I, I've gone over that with, with Kathy, you know, several times. Uh, and to tell you the truth, it's, it's, it's just a nightmare trying to, you know, change the account. Um, it's, it's based on, you know, it's based on your balances. It depends on, uh, you know, we don't get interest, but, uh, it, it, it's based on your average balance is pretty, pretty much as far as fees, fees go. So, uh,
Well, what would stop the town from just closing the citizens' account out and moving it into Liberty, not in one less account? Because they are out of town and all that kind of stuff.
Yeah, I think.
I don't know. I'm just.
Yeah, I, I, it certainly can't be done.
Kind of think that's kind of what you were thinking about.
Be a, a nightmare initially.
Okay. Well, I think Tom and I have talked a little bit about it and we don't want to get all over our eggs.
Yeah, that's the other thing.
Okay, well, that's.
I like to spread it around just a little bit. Uh, where is the, the citizens? Clayton or Westbrook?
It's Westbrook, Westbrook, yeah.
Yeah, Westbrook and Clayton.
It'd be nice to have some interest on that. That is not.
Well, it's, it's actually, it's, it's, that is, we keep it as low as we, we possibly can. This is about as low as I want to go on that. But again, it's based on, it's like a, a fee. Uh, you get, you get, based on your, the fees. You know, what your balance, your average balance depends on what kind of fees.
Right.
Um, and basically citizens really doesn't, you know, pay, pay very much. That's what, you know, I keep, like, you know, I can, we keep the minimum, pretty much the minimum, minimum amount in that, uh, general fund account. But, I mean, if it's something that, uh, people feel strong about, it's something we can look into. I just probably talk to you again.
Yeah, I'm happy. We can, we can sit down and speak.
And probably, you know, get Kathy involved too. There's a lot, a lot involved in that.
Okay.
There's, there's a fair amount of them that they closed. That was in Colchester. This is yesterday and there's the same real estate sign in front of the citizens' bank in Colchester that's closed. So they're, you know, they're.
Consolidating.
Yeah, and just, you know, little towns.
Yeah.
Yeah, you know.
I, yeah, I, I'm good. I don't think, at least I don't, as your question, I don't feel strongly about it. If you have choices.
Yeah.
Everyone's in town off a couple hours and use those hours the best you can. It makes sense to move. I, I do not wish to urge you to make your own decisions. I'm just curious.
We'll have a, we'll have a conversation.
All right. The next item on our agenda is recommendations of selection and action on the recommendations. Do I miss anything to read this year?
No. Thank you for your work on the budget. It was a long, hard season.
For the next.
So, yeah, I think you guys did a great job this year, uh, moving the town forward. Um, I think that we have, you had, I know you brought the other folks in. I think we can talk about that. We're not, maybe we're not gonna talk about it with the studio. Don't give everybody a chance to look. Anyone talk about it next month. Um, okay, a lot of reports are here and we're actually, um, meeting the auditors, driving down for another meeting tomorrow. We're gonna talk about scheduling for this year's audit.
Oh, really? They're coming in?
They're not coming here. They're going to, um, Essex or somewhere in the neighborhood. They're gonna swing in just to schedule a meeting. So we can all be, talk over this a little bit.
And some questions on the next.
Yeah, talk over this and then talk over scheduling them. Maybe they can come next month too. And also scheduling the, uh, the next audit. There was some work that we might contract with them to do, uh, to try to help us with some of our checks and balances.
So you want to put the lobby, etc. The next one?
Uh, let's let them confirm that they can.
I'll put them on time.
The, uh, one of the things we talked about briefly at the, uh, board's selectments meeting was the American Rescue Plan. Uh, we received notice today that, that the, uh, Treasury Department is getting a little bit closer to firming up their uses and things like that. Deep River right now is in line for about five hundred and forty one thousand dollars. Um, but even that's kind of fluctuating as their formulas change. Um, that's monies that right now will need to be spent before twenty twenty four. But as we talked about at this, at the board's selectments meeting, um, until they clearly define what we can use it for, I don't want to spend it. Because we, we fought, we found out with a couple of the FEMA, um, grants that they said, you know, just spend what you need to, we'll take care of it. And then in the end they, they did not. So, um, uh, yeah, you know, I don't, I don't want to get into spending, spending a mill's worth of money and then not, and not being reimbursed for all of that stuff.
No, you said that's the, the ramp.
See, American Rescue Plans, federal government, they're dispersing it to the state and the state has, uh, got formulas that they distribute it to, to the towns.
For what years?
No, you know, it's money that goes, comes here, we need to spend it and define how we spend it. Um, we're gonna set up an account, I would assume. So we can keep it separate from all of our general fund monies, uh, just for accounting purposes. So.
That's what you and I thought. We might have set up a completely separate fund. So it does get different things.
Yeah.
Does that have to be just kind of like one particular project or?
No, it can be spent on a whole bunch of different things. There are things that are really exciting for some of the folks in this town that might need, some need monies. We can actually set up grants for monies for, for individuals. We can set up grants for, for businesses, which is really, um, uh, we just are gonna need to set up parameters about, you know, show how much your losses were and we can, we can try to reimburse some of that. There's a lot of different things that we can do. We can use it for infrastructure. The only thing we cannot do is use it for anything that is in our budget. Which, um, might come in handy when we did some of the things like the police, uh, police body cams are not in our budget. So we might be, we might be able to utilize it for that. We might be able to utilize it for, if you can consider the radios for our trucks, for our fire trucks, our ambulance and our firemen and our town crews all get on the same radio. We need to upgrade those radios anyway. That's a two hundred thousand dollar project. So that it might fall into that. Um, so we just need to get that defined. Once we get it defined, we can start making decisions.
Now, monies are actually given to businesses and individuals. Is there something that states they have to pay that?
Uh, there will be grants. There'll be grants similar to the PPPs and similar to some of the other ones, but they're distributed by the, the local communities as opposed to the federal government. And we'll have to work on Tommy. We'll have to get a committee together of people that are a lot better at finances than me. To figure out parameters of how you can document, what kind of documentation you're gonna have to provide. But those are exciting things for, for people that suffered through, you know, I know, I know a couple of restaurants here. I did what, what I did. Took their savings, their pension funds to get them through this. Now they're, you know, gonna start, start, you know, start back with us. With, to get back to, to regular business.
So the government just gives you the money and says, spend it on these items and they're, they have to have some sort of accounting service to make sure that you're.
Oh, yeah. No, we're gonna have to report to them. Yeah, absolutely. It's gonna be work. That's why, that's why we want to put it in a separate account. So we can ensure that that money is there. These are the checks that went out. This is what they were for, all of the different things that we can document what we spent it on and why we spent it.
So you're saying you're gonna actually set up a committee?
I, yes, I think we have to.
Overseal oversee this all?
Well, then maybe not oversee it. I think that the board of selectmen, the board of finance have the final say on where it goes, but help us with it. Help us manage it, you know? Help us put up some, something, you know, folks that are, folks that are in banking can, can get together and say, okay, when we're doing months, these are things that we document. That we need to have documented through business, accounting for the past year or, you know, what, how much you made in, uh, from February to February in twenty nineteen? And how much you made from February to February twenty twenty. So you can show the losses.
I'm wondering too, that, uh, there's a separate account set up for this, uh, kind of an interest bearing account.
That's, I would guess not, but I would guess not, but then we could go right into citizens.
You would only need the committee if you're gonna give money back to the residents or the businesses. If you're gonna spend on the radios, cameras.
That's right.
You wouldn't need to, correct?
That's correct. Yeah.
Sounds like a little bit.
Uh, that's, that's my intent. I, I think, I know that there are folks around here that could use it. Um, and it's just gonna be a matter of.
The, the cost, the cost of doing that evaluation and all that kind of stuff.
Well, um, my hope is that it's all volunteers.
Okay, I'm just in the community. They're gonna help us out.
Yep. But those, so that's, that's, that's kind of, it's big news, but it's, it's not finished news. It's, it's a moving target.
Keeping that theme going. What are we doing with the state grant? Or are we gonna smoke that economic?
Steve, Steve money. Yeah, that's coming, it's coming fast. We've got proposals now and a couple of, on the signs. We're, uh, I'm meeting with, uh, one computer group. I've already got one proposal. I'm meeting with another computer group for the upgrade. Um, I'm hopeful that by the end of July, we'll have the upstairs outfitted for meetings. We'll have this room outfitted for meetings.
Actually outfit it.
Yeah, no, I'm gonna, we're gonna have, we're gonna have a, a large screen, uh, a microphone, cameras, all that kind of.
And will the town need to front end those costs and get reimbursed or do we get a statement?
Yes.
That's a multiple choice.
We've got a front end this. Actually, I think this ARP one can, can help us out with some of that too. Anything that's over, you know, I don't, I don't expect anything to do over the budget, but any town obligation, we can utilize that money for, right now. I don't know what the final thing is.
Okay. I have one question. This is actually, I have to be very, to our, um, ECS guys. I, Deep River makes out very well. I mean, we get a lot more than Chester in essence. And, you know, I'm always worried about this.
Me too.
When we're gonna get hammered or anything. I mean, you guys, you know, a million, six, yeah. Any idea?
Uh, the governor, um, the governor's proposed budget drops us down about thirty five hundred dollars. It was pretty insignificant. But the, the budget that was approved last year, um, starts a scheduled reduction. Um, they did not give us what those reductions are going to be or where we're going to land. They're, they're gonna reformulate how they distribute the money. Deep River has benefited for a long time. We were a distressed community for a while when that got set up. Um, I don't know what's going to happen. It's not gonna be pretty if it goes too.
I know. That's, that's one thing I saw where it's.
Me too. I'll tell you, when I first, when, when I first got in the seat, I kept thinking to myself, we've got to start weaning myself off that. But that's a, that's a big chunk of change. You know, I, I don't know.
That's a big notion.
Yeah. So we just, uh, developed on St. John's and, uh, do that. I don't know. Yeah. Or, you know, we, we actually have to, we have to get into expanding our industrial bits. Uh, we certainly, um, historically, we're the industrial center of this area. There's no reason why we can't be again, except for land and zoning.
What's next? So let's put a couple of industries up there from that, uh, next to your neighbors up, uh, where they, uh, they, uh, took some more big angel industrial part.
Well, I think. Contact and hammer's out. Let's see if they want to come back.
They're all saying, like, fifteen, two.
We'll get two books each. Pick one, one.
What if he said two books each?
You will get two. One thick and one thin. Skinny and fat.
All right. As, as I just already said, we received from, uh, our external auditors, the, our audits dated for, uh, year, the last year, ending June thirty, uh, twenty. Um, and there's the, the audit was done in March. Yeah, is when they dated them and. Um, and there's the, the audit was done in March, is when they dated them and. So let's call that correspondence and let's, uh, let's suggest we talk about it in more detail, especially the others coming up.
Yeah.
Uh, but that does bring up, uh, the correspondence. I sent to all of you a copy of the correspondence that I received from the tax collector. Uh, if you remember annually, uh, we, uh, we are asked by the tax collector to approve the, approve, approve the movement of certain uncollected taxes to a suspense account, all right? Um, and the letter she sent to us was, I think, thirty-five thousand eight hundred and forty-five dollars, right? Was it thirty-five, thank you? And five, and then she puts the, we're mixed. If you look at those numbers, they are made up, principally they are made up of four hundred and sixty dollars, relatively, majority of it being motor vehicle and motor vehicle supplements that she has tried and ten thousand of personal property um, that they have tried. She goes through a long discussion of how she, uh, tried to identify these people in various ways and just had them there. Um, now, for those of you who find accounting to be important, accountants say that if we're going to tell the world of that, this, we have to tell them that we have revenues that we expect to come in in future as our balance sheet. If we do not expect these revenues to come in, we have an obligation to not be quick. So what she is asking is to pull them out and an account appears on our balance sheet. And so future revenue, and while the obligations still owe to didn't pass and periodically she does make contact with people, it will not show up in our financial statements as revenue coming in, which is one of the underlying bases of accounting is what revenues you recognize are coming in. If, if any of you find it fun, some of the biggest financial scandals have been based on assuming revenues are coming in that you could not expect to come in. So that's probably a big issue. Uh, if, since you have that book in front of you, let's, uh, since there are some, I think, let's see if I can get it. If you look on page thirty-one. My goal here is to, uh, show you just how much fun I can intend to. Um, and if you look on page thirty-one, it's your notes to financial statements. You'll see a discussion in note one called property taxes. I'm going to drop them down to the middle. I'm not gonna read the entire thing. I will read them. Um, the liquid motor vehicle and personal property accounts, which we just chatted about, are transferred to the suspense account after three years, at which time they cease to be carried as received. However, they remain valid claims for up to fifteen years, they could be one of them. Based on historical collection experience and other factors, the town has established an allowance for uncollectible taxes and interest as of June, the financial statement you're looking for, twenty-five thousand dollars of taxes and nine thousand dollars respectively. Which means that there was work done on historical taxes not paid and they estimated that we would not collect on average about twenty-five thousand of those taxes and nine thousand interest, which is accidentally the exact, virtually the exact number that we're being asked to move to suspense. They will estimate a new allowance. So in this book, when you look at future revenues, that uncollected taxes, there is an allowance of twenty-five thousand. The work that we're doing is consistent with that. So that's, so I need a, uh, recommendation to accept the, uh, I need a, uh, motion to, uh, authorize the movement. Tomorrow, we'll read the number again, of a certain number over to the suspense.
Thirty-four thousand nine hundred and seventy-five.
I will move that, move that, thirty-seven thousand nine hundred and fifty-five.
Nine seven nine eight five.
Nine seven nine eight five. I have two suspense files.
Awesome. Second.
All of those in the paper? Say a line.
Hi.
Any discussion?
Can I just ask that? I know we've done this in the past, but it's not an annual thing, I don't think, is it? It, it, it might be, but I don't remember.
We had this discussion earlier. It used to be very regular.
Yeah.
On certain times of year, I would go looking for it, you know, there's that list. And then it kind of, does that, the other thing occur? It wasn't done that kind of way. For whatever reason, there were various reasons why it wasn't, and it got to being not so regular. It's back to the, like this past two years.
Yeah, good.
So it should be on a regular basis.
Yeah, okay. That's what I wasn't sure about.
Yeah. Is it the same source? Or you'd say? It's the same source, but change in personnel and allegations, unsure and bought it.
Do you find, George?
Basically, same. Same department. No, actually she should be collecting our prime or not collecting our.
A habitual non-payer.
A certain person simply doesn't pay year after year.
No, it's a list.
Actually, if you look at the medical pages, there's fifteen pages.
Yeah, I can't open the file. You said we laid down and Eric opens up for me.
I just want to wean down from you.
Actually, some seconds, some years.
Different people, we do not bear. Different from one year to the next year.
And most of these are folks who lived in town with a car that moved somewhere.
And still, 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 uh, contact.
If they could find a rest for him. Someone that passed away, someone that moved away and even, I know she uses various sources to find people who live in different parts of the world and they contact. She had a, uh, a collection agency where I had someone rather successfully, but there's still substantial amounts that they would pay.
And that cost to use a collection agency also.
Uh, that's for a. They get a break. They add their fees to the taxes that is earned. So. And if you think about what Laurie just called out, very, very few of it is property taxes, which she faces a lean on. Most of these are motor vehicles and if you're in a band and you have a drum, uh, we tax your drum. Uh, you can't put leans on those kinds of things. So these people that are into the world and the other.
No, but they can register their car, or register that car, yeah.
In Connecticut.
In Connecticut.
Yeah, Connecticut. But in other states, they can. Or, yes, that's correct.
Um, before we go into something else, something I, I know I bring this up every day. As real property does not get paid, and there are occasionally, uh, large pieces of property that need to be, come up at auction. We have not done that, so.
It is about three years ago and I think, hopefully we can do it again.
Yeah.
My mistake.
Property that has come back with town, because they're paying the taxes or maybe.
We have, we have a property up off of Westbrook Road that just came that's connected right to another property. It's very wet. I don't know what it will bring in, but it might. So we're gonna try to auction that. We're gonna try to auction, uh, property that we have. It's, it's all swamp, but it's beautiful. Up, up, up in, uh, up in the coast. Uh, so there are a couple of properties that we're gonna try to get.
I know that many times, we were talking about slivers, so.
Yeah.
They're pretty much inconsequential. They get grabbed onto somebody's property next door and that happens. Changes its course.
Right.
But major.
Yeah, well, it, one that's, that's, we have had for a couple of years now is up off of, um, I think it's on West Bridge, right near the highway. And it just, the, the, the next door neighbor does, it's butts by the highway and the next door neighbor, the next door neighbor is uninterested. So, and it's not buildable. It's just, there's no auction, nobody's taking. So those, those just sit. But maybe, I think we should put a park there. It's a little bench.
Home space?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, it's less than a quarter of an acre. But it'd be a nice place to sit, I guess. So the highway, it'll buy. Just one of those things. But yeah, I know that is something we do like a couple of years, and for every, but a few years. It's, it's really interesting. We have to have an attorney here for someone to do it. Not too many people show up.
Tommy, I was here for one, some years ago, probably ten or twelve years ago. And it was very interesting.
Yeah.
And there are a couple of pieces still, uh, one piece that nobody's been on from that.
Yep.
Time, you know, a decade ago, and it's still, it's a limbo, so.
Well, we own it. Uh, if we took it, some of them we haven't taken for exactly that reason.
Well, is it stuff that can be given to the land trust? Since it's, nobody's paying taxes on it?
It can, it can, but it doesn't.
Like if it's swampy things, it could be used for nature studies or, you know, conservation or something?
Good idea. We'll, we'll, we'll certainly be touching. I'm not sure. It was any good keeping it. Doesn't do us much good. It doesn't do much better here than right now. Never. Okay, thanks.
Um, since you have your accounting books in front of you, um, let's take a moment, turn to page ninety-five. This is it. This is it. This is it. I find this page interesting. This is the page, special property taxes means collective and out scandal. Uh, what we just approved from the tax collector was a grand list dated two thousand nineteen, the next year on this schedule. But, uh, you can sort of figure it out. There is the, uh, the balance, the current levy and those who we add and subtract during the year. And you can see the amount that's collected and at the end you see the amount that is uncollected. So, uh, uh, at the end of, uh, June thirty, we had three hundred ninety-nine, eight, eight, seven uncollected taxes. And every year we make the assumption that we will collect about a hundred fifty. So it is coming out of that. Note that it's declining. That is good. That is good. But we need to keep that in mind as we just, we set our budget and say, here's how much we're going to collect. So. All right, that is the, uh, at the end of the entertainment part of the year. What now turns us to, uh, the monthly budget reports. Uh, did you make copies or did you? Cut off, let's see, we're virtually at May, we're sort of finished the year. So what have we got? About ten, eleven, twelve percent left?
Yep, eleven point five.
Does anyone have any particular questions? Uh, Angus, you want to comment on the telephone? I know that is new and you can get, you assume there is additional cost there also.
Well, yeah, telephone is something that has been, um, driving me crazy since we, we, we changed. Frontier has been slow. We're gonna get some of this money back. It was discharged, but also we had, we had a couple of months where we had the new system and the old system running at the same pace. Plus, this telephone also is Comcast and all the other things, um, it doesn't reflect some of the changes we made at the fire department with their computer. They've got their frontier and they're all Comcast now. Um, so. But it's, it's way over. It's way over where it should be. Um, and we're trying, we're addressing that. We should not see that in next year's budget at all. It's just, we was just trying to make the transition. Didn't go as smoothly as we hoped.
Certainly, uh, but we should not go shooting past. We have not every month collections. While they are over budget, they were there the other night for the votes. So I suspect they will. There's more overage than this time.
Yes, yes, there will be, yeah. Remember though, and this is where we're gonna get into the contra accounting, what we're going to be doing. Good portion of this overage was due directly to the additional work that had to be put in to have, uh, the November elections, the primaries leading up to the November elections. All those were during COVID. They needed all kinds of different, um, expenditures at different times, different things like that to get those done. So, uh, and we have been reimbursed for that. It just needs to be put in, you know, you'll, you'll see some of that money in the revenue section.
And the contra concept we were, Angus has made reference, a conversation we had with the auditors. So we, we spent the dollars out of that account. It will look to the world and looks at it. We overspent that account. But we got reimbursed for that. And what we're talking about is maybe that reimbursement should be reflected as a negative to that expenditure. So that future generations could see it was actually net number on something that.
We'll see that in a couple of places.
And you have captured, when you capture the issue, the police line looks like they spent a lot of money, but if you go to the revenue, they, they even more. Um, recreation is another example where we, like, let, uh, in prior years, we would collect dollars. It looks like they spent, went over budget, but if you look at the revenues, they're actually right on. Yes. All right, any, anyone else have been catching on, folks? It was me and the police that we chatted about the police. We, uh, I don't know when we get the, but the bill for resident state trooper. It always looks like they haven't, uh, paid for that. Uh, I suspect we would, we certainly will pay some portion of the resident state trooper. Do you think it's up closer to ninety, did you?
It's high. It's higher than it is for coming here. But it's not a hundred, if you pay, it's still a little bit better.
Just sort of, uh, they said, here's the number for your resident state trooper. They haven't been charging them, so. I wait, I can always leave, but, um, we had a fairly, let's see, I will put it out of state and then we'll just, a fairly un-snow year. That's about the, we should have had some of what has prior years been big on the superdota. I expect, is that a good thing? We expect some.
Yes, as you can see, we're at seventeen percent there. It should be at around eleven and a half, twelve. So we did save there.
But that's actually amazing. A lot of the storms happened on Saturday.
Yep, yep. No, it was really not a lot of overtime for the storms. But you'll see, to that point, we did overspend sand and salt. There were storms, they just were.
Come pick it up.
It was a good chunk kind of that of mine too.
And you remember, continuously, uh, that goes to our earlier conversation, much of that consistency was spent, overspent because of, uh.
That was ICAS. And that, that will, um, we are in the process of filing that now. So that will be reimbursed.
How do you weigh a lot of trees or?
Oh, we're doing okay. If you look at our budget, we've got, there, they should, you should see the tree cutters out there in June, catching up with that. And then, uh, and then July and August really getting done. But he likes to, he likes to do it in, uh, he likes to get the trees that are prioritized and then come back in the wintertime, um, and, and cut them. And then in the springtime, when you see the new ones that, that were not listed, come back. So. We're doing well. I think we're, I think we're doing pretty well. What we're getting to now is a lot of trees that are not on our property. You know, that they're near town right away, um, and property owners are all, these trees dead. Turns out it's not ours. So. That's, that's, I mean, troublesome for them because it's not cheap to pick them, it's great.
Say something about waste removal and certain, we actually still have quite a few dollars there, but I don't have, I don't know much of how much faith we have in someone that's done that.
I'm not sure we have, we, we don't have that much dollars there. Um, mirror tipping fees, we're a little bit, we're a little bit high there. Um, but I'm going to tell you that I think that has to do with, maybe the people scoff, but I think that we're just having some, a couple of people up there would be doing a little bit better on managing the people that come through. But generally speaking, um, we're, we're where we need to be. We're a little bit, their salaries are a little bit high. Um, water testing, engineering, they're doing that, they're doing that now. So that, I expect that'll be, uh, that'll be done soon, I think. Bulky waste is at twenty-three. And, uh, mirrors at seventeen, so, so that is a little bit high. I'm hopeful that that's because we're, we're doing a better job. Think about what we're putting away.
Okay, all right. Anyone else have any question?
And all that muster money didn't get used, so it will back up in this year's?
That'll, well, it'll go into our, go into our surplus and it's kind of. That'll, well, it'll go into our, go into our surplus and spend it again this year. We will spend it this year, but we are having a muster.
Do you know how many people, what companies, uh, call you some?
No, yeah, I don't think, actually, I don't think this year they're gonna know until the last minute.
Yeah.
Because, you know, the last meeting we had, uh, there, there were still boys that had not rehearsed for the last year and a half, and they don't want to travel for, to, to muster like ours and come unprepared. Um, there are other muster groups that are just not sure they're gonna travel. Um, and they're making those decisions now.
They still plan to have a parade.
They're definitely having a parade.
It's just a matter of how big the field, not, no.
No, we're having the parade.
Put your suit on.
Two in a month. I don't know, Nigel says.
I don't know what Richard Blumenthal would do if we didn't have muster twice in a row.
Hey, do you not have any, uh, any words from the elementary school?
No.
Whether, I wonder whether, I hear you wondering, okay. Um, in general town government, if you remember, we'll come through again, we put into our budget, the assumption that they would get two hundred and five thousand dollar grant to buy scuba, I don't connect.
SCBA, yes.
Whatever it is.
Breathing out a rap.
But yet we said to, therefore the revenue side, we won't see two hundred and five thousand dollars. But we did tell them to move forward with what, seventy thousand dollars.
Seventy thousand.
Notice that they have spent that, and that now, so.
I followed up with that, but they've ordered the stuff, it's just hasn't arrived yet.
You certainly go and you'll get it, so you will, we may have to, uh, reserve those numbers as we finish the budget. Yeah? Um, I'm zipping through, once we go, when to stop anywhere, uh, we can go to, uh, quick view of revenue. Yeah? Um, I guess we, it's in the first line. Uh, if you remember, we get from the assessor, the grant list, we apply a, uh, a bill rate to it, we assume that two percent of people will not pay the current year, that's a team we had already. Um, that assumption is, seems to be working out, there's about eighteen thousand dollars that, uh, have not been paid in this year's revenue, so. Yeah, their taxes seem to be over. And, and other than that, does anyone have anything they wish to, uh, to see their eyes, or relax to themselves? Uh, let's, uh, let's do point out to the conveyance tax. There are a lot of houses being sold in the Downland Deep River, uh, which we did not anticipate, and that, that revenue will be with us.
Those are the two, um, two that I think that are directly related to our revenues this year. The conveyance taxes and building permits. Um, that, that's really high, it's, it's, what is it, forty-two thousand dollars over what we budgeted for building permits.
And I just remind you that a moment ago, I just said the two oh five, which we're assuming is not coming out. Uh, we will not call, call upon loss of this year, so that's an additional thirty-one, thirty-five thousand dollars that we will not get, so.
You, if you look down, you'll see, uh, here from the bottom, unit CRF grant. That was the FEMA, uh, and that was the state, uh, portion of the COVID review fund.
Which actually we never anticipated.
That covered, no, that, that's what covered, um, the, uh, that's what is covering the, uh, some of the parks and rec monies, some, that's what's covering, uh, the, uh, registrars, over expenditures, uh, some of those things, that's what that money is for.
Not my, same, when we put the budget.
Oh, yeah, no, we need that, yeah.
Of course, we did assume the expenses that were getting reimbursed.
That's right.
Yeah, on the day.
It's an interesting year, if you think about a year ago, where we were when we were preparing this budget, and the speculation of how much we were gonna have to do.
Hmm.
And it really, it, it's testament to the community that our taxes, those are where they are, and, and our tax collections are where they are. But also just to who, who would have thought that with our conveyance taxes would brought in an additional fifty thousand dollars over budget a year ago? When we were preparing this budget, no way. Building permits, you always hope, but who, you know, who would have thought?
That's right.
The, uh, the very last line on expenses that we consider in the state of services.
Yep. Yeah, we have a seven of it. Why? I don't know. It's like the kid in Limbo.
I'm not sure it's my authority to send it to you, but, uh, yes. It will be though.
That is not the bottom line, if you're putting pages over, there should be a second page.
Bottom line on that.
Bottom line. I, I figured you knew that, but.
We're only, uh, remaining balanced, what, just over two hundred thousand?
Yeah, so, that's, you know, every time you get in twenty thousand, you're, that's, yeah. Good.
Probably opening the auditorium soon to productions?
Yeah. I don't, I don't see any reason not to, except for I like using it for meeting space instead. It's a wonderful space, a marvelous space, it's just, it's cumbersome during business hours when people are, they're rehearsing, especially in the fifth of the month. Um, you know, and the land use, the land use really is, that office is the green room for that, and it's the emergency access, and it's very, very difficult to use it for productions when town halls open, um, and that those groups need to, need to be up there. Yep. You know what, I'm so disappointed though, I, I was kind of hopeful that the elementary school usually has their graduation exam, I guess they're not going to this year, so. Yeah, I don't know why, new principal, new rules, I don't know.
Okay.
I don't know, sorry. I'm, I'm a guess they are, I guess they are.
Um, that is our review of the monthly budget. Um, other business, does anyone have any other business? Angus was fine enough, generous enough, you compliment all the work that everyone did. Let's say you got a bunch of beer, maybe, peditorial rights, uh, and, and, and that is a repeat, but it is amazing how we sat here through the months, people asking to increase costs to provide better or more services. But yet, at the meeting, there were substantial amount of people who said your cost too much.
Eighteen out of twenty.
I do not know.
Oh, yeah, that's why I was wondering what the, you know, if you voted no, why, that question, what the result of that question was. Because it was too high.
Eighteen were too high. I voted too low, but I voted yes.
Yeah, it's too low. That confuses.
John, um, I have these, uh, audit books, Joyce will have Metar desk if you want to stop.
Okay, very good, yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll pick one up when I get a chance, yeah.
Thanks.
Okay, that is, uh, all that may hold for us to discuss, so. Do I have a motion for adjournment? Or a second thing? All in favor? Uh, bye, everybody.